Mr. Quirk, would you call the votes? Mayor Williamville Edwards here. Mayor Broten Catherine Ralph.
Here.
Councilmember Carmelita Duns.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis Lee Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Diane McGilleyard.
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Cleve. I believe these are the back end. Councilmember Mark Baker.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a vote.
At this time, we actually have an invitation by Chaplin all about the play of the league. Hello God. Here we are again. All mayor and officials, employees, all of you. Last time we traveled, we were disrupted by a storm. Changed our lives, we had to put a roof down on the office. The after the storm, all our trees were down, all of our food, 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 devastation. But then family reached out to town. Neighbor reached out to neighbor. Friend reached out to friend. Even enemy reached out to me just to see if there was something we could do. Unity is the number one force to beat all disasters. Remind us of God that there is another storm brewing. Another storm coming. Keep us united together so that as we build this city, whatever storm might come, unity is the best solution. So we give you the praise and the honor and the glory. Make this session your session. This we pray. Let us all say, amen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do have, before you announce the approval of the consent agenda, and I do have two changes as requested by Councilmember McGilleyard relative to her vote on two items from previous meetings of council. The first item was during a discussion of the municipal courts of the city, and this is related to establishing an effective day of member refer to activated by municipal council for the establishment of the court with a friendly amendment to Councilmember McGilleyard. She wants to make sure that her vote, although she might have been quiet at the moment, that she wants her vote to be reflected as a yea vote. So we will reflect that change. Additionally, towards the end of the meeting, under the city manager's weekly update, that's on page fifteen of three hundred thirty. I'm sorry. It was a abstain vote. It was just neither yea nor nay. It was a did not vote. And truly in accordance with Robert's rules of order, if someone does not speak to their opposition, they can be recorded as a yea. Because I'm, as an employee of council generally though, I will be reflecting neither yea nor nay as that member not voting. So I will detail as always, not the same. I'm saying what we know. Is it okay where you're going to be?
Yeah, abstention.
I'm not trying over. I'm just, I mean, he won't put on body. I'm just wondering if he's saying, hey.
I'm not voting for the vote, but yea.
Mayor, I don't know the answer on the Robert rule, but I will have it for the next meeting.
Okay, we should disagree on Robert's rule. That's okay.
Really, I would not vote. And the mayor says to me, I mean, do you know that not voting is a yes vote?
Okay. The other matter was, was actually a procedural matter, and this was, this occurred during a vote on the executive search process. And at the time that it was before council, Councilmember Willis was wishing to change her vote from a yea vote to a nay vote. And so we had a procedural motion to rescind the previous action in order for Councilmember Willis to change her vote on that item. And in that, on the procedural motion, the motion to rescind the previous action, this is where Councilmember McGilleyard is also wishing for her vote not to be reflected as a nay vote because she did not physically vote. Based on your interpretation of the rule that we did before? I'm sorry. Based on your same interpretation of the rule that you, that you said before?
Yes.
Okay, I think that from this point on, and you and I talked about this, that we may need to call for, for the opposition, yeah. And I think that that is clear. So I will, if I'm to care, I'll just call the vote. And thanks to council, at the last meeting, we're going to move to an electronic voting system in the near future. But the same issue will be before you because there may be times where a member neither votes yea or nay. And unless body, the body officer compels that individual to press one or the other button or press abstain, the same issue will be before you. So it doesn't resolve the issue per se with the electronic voting, but the same is true. Knowing who opposes is more important than knowing who's voting yea. Counselor, I, I would like to use your panel, right? On that.
We will do that.
I also would like me to defer to the charter because I remember this coming out during, earlier in the, during one of our sessions. And I recall, and I was doing one of our training sessions, I recall Representative Booth saying that the only way that you could abstain is if there is a conflict and then you would have to state what that conflict is or if you're not present. So if you're not present, then you cannot vote. But if you're here, unless there is a conflict, you have to vote.
I, I agree with you in terms of the charter. Okay, well, taking that into consideration, constantly.
I do understand that Robert's rule of order compels people to vote if they are present. I took a not present vote. But I also understand that we can amend Robert's rule, which many elected bodies do to tailor it for the body. And I wonder, number one, I'm wondering openly to council, might we need to amend it so that people can make abstentions for whatever conscientious objections they have? But I would like to ask both you and council, what would be the process by which we would need to make such a change?
And I don't want to speak for council, but I would like to say that it's not so much that you're amending Robert's rules of order, it's you would amend your own procedural rules, right? So at our very first meeting, you all adopted procedural rules for your meetings and you basically adopted what folks in county did. So that's ordinance number three, that we never do. And that's where you would make the change. You wouldn't really, and wherever that, those rules of procedure are cited, that's what we then rely on. And Mr. Cleve, I ask you to turn the panel on everything. We will call up the yes, copy the letters, and then we can decide. Okay? Mr. Baker?
Mr. Kurt, I just wanted to know, will the machine, the electronic machine have the abstaining option?
Yes, it will have yea, nay, and abstain. But what will happen, if you're not compelled in the moment and you don't happen to press the button, this issue will still be there. This issue of neither voting yea or nay or abstain. Okay? So the other items, I don't have any other requested changes to the minutes. There are also, was a proclamation given by Mayor Edwards through Apostle Vinnie Tenet for Appreciation Day. Those are all the changes to the consent vote, all right? Well, I would accept the most approved consent vote as amended.
I approve the consent agenda.
Properly moved the second to day of discussion, although in favor. That's every fact. Go ahead, Mr. Kurt. On page two of three, number five, approval of the regular meeting agenda. And I get, I don't know if it is the pleasure of Councilmember Cleve to speak to his item now or if you want to deal with that when we get to your resolution.
I'm going to withdraw that for right now. In fact, and I, I would just ask if the people who are ready to vote in the middle of that would be just able to.
But that will be removed at the request of the President's decision. Hearing no further, I am here in motion to approve the regular agenda.
I approve the regular agenda.
Properly moved the second and discussion, although in favor. Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's a, that's a good one. That's another good one. Approved. The next item is sponsored by Councilmember Duns, a proclamation recognizing October twenty seventeen as Crime Prevention Month.
Good evening, everyone. I first want to let you all know that October twenty seventeen has been designated as Crime Prevention Month, and that is something that we all hold dear and dear to our hearts here in the city of South Fulton. So I wanted to make sure that we as a city recognize our police officers and the work that they are doing here in our city. So I'm going to be this proclamation, this proclamation, and then I will present it to our staff. Whereas in nineteen eighty-four, the National Crime Prevention Council designated October as Crime Prevention Month. And whereas every year since then, government agencies, civic groups, schools, businesses, and youth organizations have reached out to educate the public, showcase their accomplishments, and explore new partnerships during this special month. And whereas October has become the official month for recognizing and celebrating the practice of crime prevention while promoting awareness and important issues such as victimization, volunteerism, and creating safer, more, and caring communities. And whereas the month-long celebration spotlights successful crime prevention efforts on the local, state, and national levels, and some of these activities focus on Halloween, which is celebrated the last week of the month. And whereas the National Crime Prevention Council believes that, believes that crime can be prevented, truly effective prevention requires addressing causes of crime and reducing opportunities for it to occur. Everyone, no matter what age, position, or capacity, can and must take individual action to stop crime. And whereas the problems of crime, violence, and drug abuse are best addressed through local and state policies, partnerships that actively involve the local community and its residents, this is the key to preventing crime. And now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of South Fulton recognize the month of October twenty seventeen as Crime Prevention Month, and do by here proclaim the month of October twenty seventeen as Crime Prevention Appreciation Month in the city of South Fulton, Georgia. And I also want to let you know that October the second through October the eighth of two thousand and seventeen is National Crime, excuse me, National Community Police Month. So you'll see an array of activities that will be happening throughout the state of Georgia and also throughout Fulton County. So I want to say thank you so much, and we would love to work together on anything that's happening within, to prevent the crime prevention. Would you like to say?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, councilwoman, I just want to thank you for your sponsorship of this proclamation. Also want to thank the mayor and council for their continued support of public safety in general. I will be remiss if I didn't thank all of you, the citizens that we serve. Without you, the police department cannot be effective or efficient. And last but not least, I want to thank, you know, the men, men and women of the Fulton County Police Department. They are the true warriors and guardians, and I think they deserve a great round of applause.
You all get tighter for me, please. One more. One, two. Actually, can you hold the proclamation up a little bit? Thank you. One, two, three. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you're now at the public comment section of today's meeting. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes. Each in public comment will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Mr. Mayor and members of council, we have received thirteen speaker cards. So the first three speakers would please approach the podium at this time. Mr. Tony Davis, Mr. Melvin Bolton, and Ms. Angel Payne. I would like to add or request that each of you state or district you happen to live in, the councilmembers do like to make that relationship.
Our fourteenth speaker. Good afternoon, good evening, mayor and councilperson. My name is Tony Davis. I am the football director for Old National Youth Athletic Association. As of October of two thousand and fifteen, we was informed that Georgia Power or something was going to come out and reroute the power in the area. On, in that time, during the midst of a football season, half the power in our park was actually gone. And during that time, we was communicating with the park director, Mr. Phillips, at for the end of certain time of getting that back going. Really, at that time, it was more of a Georgia Power coming to fix and, you know, we just have to wait till that get done. Well, moving forward, sometime in May of two thousand and sixteen, myself and Coach Lamar athlete come to practice, and there was a pole down, and it was actually rodded from inside, you know, in the middle of our football field. And you can only imagine if that was a game on the fifty yard line, then some kids was out there. So, you know, that was two thousand and sixteen. We're now in September two thousand and seventeen, and at seven fifty-nine, eight o'clock, it is pitch black out there. And it is a inconvenience to the parents that decide to come and be a part of our, our family. There's an inconvenience that we, due to the lack of light, of course, the commu, uh, communicating to the, commuting to the park, you know, parents will sometimes get there a little late, so you're looking at roughly about an hour every time a parent get out there because at eight o'clock, there's no reason for them to be out there. At times that we happened out there, we had a couple break in, just because back when the lights is out, we don't even have street lights. So, you know, we're trying to keep a safe environment for the, the community and for the kids that's across the street, up and down Old National, anybody that want to participate. So, you know, I've come to you guys to ask for some kind of help because of fact, for two years, you know, we have sat back in athlete wait, waited on the previous board to have to come and do their part, and now with the new city of South Fulton, we're still out there, and we're still being trying to be a pillar of the community, and we don't have any help.
We got you. We got you.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. I'm Melvin Bolton. I live on Squeezing Flump Subdivision, but I also have profound interest in Old National Park. My grandchildren play there, come to that before, and it's really a safe haven for kids, but it's very difficult to operate as a safe haven if you operate in and duck. So we need some help because when the park is dark, it invites the criminal element to come in and to perform their operation. And we don't need that in the park because not only do we practice football there, play football there, but families come out to enjoy the park, you know, as a playground where little kids come out to play. And we need some light, we need some help. And we also, since October is a special month for recognizing our officers, we need patrol so that we can feel safe when we're at that park. And I think this is very important, and I hope that you guys will find a way to help us with this particular issue because it will only get worse if we don't resolve the problem from right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Following Ms. Angel Payne, Mr. Pennon Lockhart, and Mr. Michael Pointer. Ms. Payne.
Good evening, council and residents. My name is Angel Payne. I'm a resident of Vermont State, and my question is, being a new resident of South Fulton, will we be able to use the city of South Fulton in our address line? And would we be using the same zip code as we have another zip code?
Thank you.
To the Honorable Mayor Edwards and City Council. I'm Pennon Lockhart. I'm a resident of the city of South Fulton, four fifteen, old top circle, District Seven. I'm president of our HOA, which is involved District Six and District Seven. My comments pertain to the religious connotations on the city's seal. As a former professor, this emblem of Heru, a horse, was one of the oldest gods of ancient Egypt, and was merged with the sun god Ra. And I want to say that this symbol actually carries their religious implications. Now, I'm speaking as a Christian minister and a concerned citizen of the city of South Fulton. The image of this sun god Ra, which is that solar disc circled the head of the fowl of Heru, it brings the greatest concern as a display on the modified city's seal. Now, my theological background points to Ra as one of the animal gods that Moses counted during the ten plagues of Exodus, as God led to the land of Egypt and darkness, and the narrative goes on. But the support of the sun god Ra would be a violation of the first of the ten commandments which prohibit its other gods. Now, I do realize that there is a plethora of now valid symbols already used in American society in general, and there's much more I can deal with or address right now, but I want to suggest that the council reconsider this new seal and embrace the seal used during the inauguration. I believe that it's more open, it's inclusive, I understand it's faithful, and I think it's good for business. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mr. Michael Pointer, Ms. Keshada Allen, Ms. Marissa Miller, and Ms. Elise Fisher. Mr. Porter.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, Mr. Porter.
Good evening, mayor and council. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, we're giving honor to God who is the head of my life. I am here to, to inquire if you all ever tried to touch base with some of the universities, colleges, and technical schools and trying to get satellite colleges, institutions in the Fulton, in our city. And number two, of the money that was supposed to come to our city, how much has been deposited in our account and how much is still illiquid as far as not being given to the city? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, as your name is called, please come down towards the podium. Ms. Allen, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Fisher.
Hi, I'm Keshada Allen, District Three. And I'm part of the Old National Youth Athletic Association. I'm actually the vice president of the board. And I'm just here also with Tony Davis and Mr. Bolton. My kids grew up there. I've been at Old National probably fifteen years at that park. I used to live in the area. I now live in District Three. And for, as they already say it, we really need lights. We, you know, Old National Park is located on Old National High, off of Old National Highway, and there's a lot of criminal element in that area. We've had situations where, you know, bodies were found at the park. We've had situations where people come and they do their games business over there. We've had tagging. And me, myself, and the other lady that runs the park with me, the program, you know, we do our best to try to keep the children safe. So, and we've had meetings after meetings after meetings after meetings where our park director and his staff, we've been told many different things. So now at this point, we need to see some type of action put in place. We need the lights.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and neighbors. My name is Marissa Miller, and I reside in District Four, and I am here speaking on behalf of the District Four Economic Development Committee. We presented a letter of some of our concerns related to the development or impending development ideas for our area, so I'm just going to start reading them. We, the District Four Economic Development Committee, would first like to extend our congratulations to each of you for being elected to serve our new city. Our committee is a citizen-led organization with four key objectives. One, to set the standard for protecting our natural, historical, and cultural resources. Two, to promote desired patterns of development with regard to housing, transportation, and commerce. Three, to preserve and enhance quality of life for the residents in our community. And four, to support local farms and business owners. Consistent with our citizen-led objectives, we begun gathering community input regarding the future vision for our district. Thus far, the core elements from that vision are that District Four is a vibrant, attractive, and distinctive destination offering shopping, living, and recreational environment; that District Two offers an exciting and yet complementary mix of uses that is distinguished by our small-town community, spirit, unique pedestrian orientation, commitment to environmental sustainability, and proximity to attractive and well-maintained neighborhoods, residential and institutional, in our area; that District Four has an established quality of life that is widely recognized by residents and visitors as the serenity district for our new city; and, we all know, it's known as the gathering spot for our new city; and four, that the residents and visitors enjoy meeting up with friends, dining and shopping at local establishments, participating in community festivals and special events, and connecting with nature along District Four's rolling hills and natural terrain.
Thank you.
Elise Fisher, also from District Four, also on the Economic Development Committee. Given this vision, it is important that we experience commercial development in a manner that is sensitive and is compatible with our beautiful scenes of nature, our existing residential neighborhoods, and our burgeoning agribusiness community. With growing development interest in private properties and potential opportunities for repurposing of publicly-owned or leased properties, we have identified the need for modification to a few elements of relating to District Four in the 2035 comprehensive plan that was established last year, just days before we affirmed our own cityhood. Specifically, we're formally requesting that you direct zoning and planning for District Four to, one, complete traffic, safety, and environmental impact analyses before approving any new industrial or core activities within our district. Two, reclassify all areas currently identified as regional live-work zones to community live-work zones. Right, eliminating that industrial impact. Three, reclassify all areas currently identified as industrial zones to community work zones. I'm sorry, community live-work zones. Finally, define the South Fulton Parkway Transitional Zone in a manner that is consistent with community live-work zone descriptions. If you're interested at all, we'd be happy to share the data and the rationale supporting this request at a time and date that's convenient for you. Thank you.
Ms. Renee Mumford, Ms. Deborah Herring, and Ms. Llena Collins.
Good evening, my name is Renee Mumford, I'm in the Meadows subdivision. But I'm really here today to speak on behalf of Old National Park, I am the president of Old National Park. Yes, I am a woman, yes, my vice president is a woman, so we are a female, if some of you want to say that. But I have just a few issues. One is police. I can't understand we have a police precinct of Old National, and we don't have any patrol coming to that park that's less than a mile away. And when we call for police, we used to have a park police before we became the city of South Fulton. Now, we call, the answer is, I'm sorry, we have no one. So my question to you today, who do we call? And please, help us to get somebody to patrol our park. The other issue is lights. I know that we lost lights two years ago, but I want to ask a question, why Georgia Power cannot come out and replace the veins that are inside of the parking lot, so that they're on when the dark, when the dark begins to set? That's simple, we've asked for it over and over from Fulton County, Parks and Rec. We always get an answer that, yes, they have been called, but yet for two years, we have no lights. So, I just want to understand why Georgia Power can't come out and do their job. We can handle a storm, but we can't handle basic lights within the park. The other question I have is where are we in improving a part of our community that's called a park? Which is, which is so well-needed in South Fulton because of the children that we have that walk the street. At Old National Park, we pull them in, we pay for them out of our pocket. Every child doesn't have to know how to play a ball, uh, football, baseball, cheerleading. If you want to participate in a sport, that's our job. And here, we are mothers that are standing here before you today to say, help us to help our community. So you have to help us clean it up, so our parks and our schools are important. We live there, I've been there thirty-four years. And I'm about to transition out of Old National as president, but before I go, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I'm asking you, the city of South Fulton, to help us to get it done. You will see me here quite often.
Good evening, I am Deborah Renee Robinson-Herring, I reside at forty-seven thirty-five Gillette Trace in the new city of South Fulton, and I am a resident, or I belong to District Three. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I stand before you to ask, what letter grade would you give yourselves as our duly-elected officials? Have you lived up to your personal core values? Are you ready to get us some police officers? Are you ready to deal with the issues we heard about specifically Old National, but any park in our new city? What is our course of action for dealing with crime? Is your behavior acceptable as leaders of our new city? Is your behavior on social media acceptable? I come to you begging, as a citizen, please handle the business of our city. Handle the finances with common sense. And once again, I say to you, know your lane, stay in your lane, operate in your lane, and stay off of the news.
Following you, Llena Collins, Ms. Jill Lindsay, Ms. Ladawn Jones, and Ms. Jewel Johnson. Ms. Collins.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Llena Collins, District Five. As a citizen of the city, I am very concerned regarding the votes to hire individual assistants by each council person. This vote leaves citizens with many unanswered questions. What are the hours per week and what is the pay range? Also, it is my understanding that the pay range exceeds that of a police or close to a policeman. Where is the justification for clerical assistance to a police officer? No one, uh, is against the assistance, the problem is the number of assistants. Because we feel as though each council person does not need an individual assistant. We need the police officers to help fight the crimes, patrol the streets, to help monitor the eighteen-woman trucks. And the firefighters, we need the firefighters not only to put out your fire, they also act in the case of first aid that may save your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, my name is Ladawn Blackett-Jones, I live in Council District Three with Honorable Helen Willis as my councilwoman. I just wanted to come and bring you all greetings, I have not seen you all since the swearing-in, and, um, wanted to, uh, leave you all with a, uh, with a quote that I think I just deleted about optimism, alright? Uh, optimism sees an opportunity in everything. And South Fulton was created with the optimistic thought that we can govern ourselves, that we have the intelligence, we have the power, we have the resources, and my optimism is not lost despite any negative publicity we may have, despite any negative comments in person or on Facebook, we have what it needs. And so I just wanted to come and, uh, say thank you for the work that you've done. Um, I did not expect that it would be easy, I knew that there would be bumps in the road and there will be difficulties. And all that I ask of you as our council and our mayor is to do it different. Do it different than they've done in other cities, because that's why we created our own city. If you make a mistake, say I made a mistake. If you're standing on the right foot, say I'm standing on the right foot, and go out to the community and explain both sides, and let the community give you the feedback that they want. Don't tell them what is right or wrong, let them tell you. That's what we are here for, and I appreciate your time. I know that no matter, no one who has been in the seats of an elected office knows how hard you work outside of everything you do, so even if I agree or disagree with any decision you all make, I thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, you and you, for your time and your energy. And last thing I say is to our community, we need to give our community a chance, we need to give our city a chance. Criticism is good, they need that, keep them on the right guard, we ain't gonna take it easy on them. But criticism comes with the support on the back end to help and to uplift. Give your suggestions, not your fighting words, give your support, your money, and your energy, and together, I'm optimistic that we do well. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable, and the Councilmen for the city of South Fulton. My name is Jill Lindsay, I am, um, part of the Old National Merchants Association. I am a two thousand seven, uh, Fulton University alumna, uh, two thousand eight, um, Fulton County Citizens University Police Department. Um, I'm calling, I'm, I'm coming to, um, talk about code enforcement for the new city. I submitted a request on September the twentieth to Mr. Wright, to, um, I'm in District Seven, with Mark Baker, and I CC, um, Angie Watkins, and, um, some other people that I knew that, that was in code enforcement. Um, I didn't get a response, I got a response from Mark, and he told me that he would talk to Ms. Ruth Jones about my request regarding, um, the signs. This per, this person is, wasn't, did not qualify in elections. I asked that these signs be removed from the wireways on our streets because I'm adopted, I am adopted for Old National Highway. I'm adopted for the state road. We are at the end of the cutting season, and these signs are all over our, our, our streets. So I want to know what is the process for code enforcement for the new city? Because we're out here working, and when you don't get a response in regards to those issues, that means the people that are on the ground that are cutting, they have to get off the, the lowers to take these signs up to cut the right ways. So my, my, um, issue is the due process for the new city for code enforcement. I have the pamphlet for the code enforcement process with the, with Fulton County. Normally, when you submit a pro, when you submit a complaint, it's a, um, seventy-two-hour turnaround. After that, um, they notify you, and if they don't comply, they wear in court and there's a case file created. Thank you.
Thank you. Following you, Jewel Johnson, Ms. Pennon, Joe, and Jerry McQuarrie. Those are our last three speakers, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to talk to you about the, of the affect effect of the last budget hearing. I went home and played the meeting over, listening and listening to the meeting three times. What I received from the meeting is this, is that there is, there seems to be some council members who are misconstruing the facts when talking to the people, and this must stop. For us to have confidence in the council leadership for the city, it must stop. As long as we keep negativity going on, this will impede any progress that we try to make. Is this what we want? I don't think so. The problem is very obvious. So in closing, I leave you with, once we start thinking seriously about the future of the city, we will gain in numerous power over the future of the city. First, we begin to recognize that we have lots of choices about what sort of future we can shape for the city. Second, we can set long-term goals and plan effectively so we can reach them. So I challenge each of you to accept the suggested leadership role as leaders of this great new city. And again, I want to thank each and every one of you. I know that most of you really want to do a good job, and I'm challenging you to do whatever legal and necessary to make that happen. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kenneth Joe Walden Parks subdivision District Two. You continue to have my support. I continue to work hard and try to keep my neighbors and my community positive. Regardless if there are good decisions or bad decisions made, because you deserve them. As long as you're in that chair, you deserve our support. But you also deserve, as I indicated last time I was at this podium, our direct feedback when things don't go well. Last week, until now, there may have been some bad decisions made. However, last week, it borderline on illegal criminal activity. Yeah, let's, let, let me explain that. Ten o'clock, there's a budget meeting. All of a sudden, after the budget meeting, after questions have been asked, a million dollars appear. Million dollars don't get lost in a budget. Doesn't get lost, period. Now, there's only two reasons that a million dollars get lost. One, if people are putting it aside to put it in a fund so they can use it for cronyism and contractual people. Or two, embezzlement, people are trying to steal money from the city. There is absolutely no other reason to hide money from the budget. Now, that million dollars was never in the budget. I never saw it. If it was in community development, it was sitting there, we just missed a million dollars? I don't think so. So where was it? More importantly, who directed that to happen? Who directed that to happen? What staff directed? It had to be somebody in finance that got it directed from somebody in city manager's office. And I, I wouldn't doubt that the city manager would not do that without someone in these eight chairs here talking with, with her about it. So, I think that we deserve an absolute, fair, intelligent answer about this abracadabra, here's a million dollars. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl McQuarrie, uh, I'm in District Four, and, uh, my issue is that, my issue is that, um, it's a warehouse that is being built behind our neighborhood, and it's almost in the backyard of our neighborhood, and they had said that, we had had meetings with them, this has been weeks ago, we have metal charges. And we have had meetings with them, and they said that it was gonna put us up, burn a hundred feet. They haven't did that, we can still see the building being built and everything, and so we need a councilor to meet with us and the mayor of Paramount to talk to them or do something, we need your help with this because I don't want to look at that building in my backyard. And so, we're asking you all to, you know, help us with this. Thank you.
No further speakers. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, your first item for business under letter A, Road Number Two, sponsored by Councilmember Jones in Resilience for the city of South Fulton for instituting an open government program, this is under Resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero five three.
With the open government, it is pretty much a reporting software that allows, uh, constituents to go online to actually see the financials that are happening within the city. Um, also allow residents, vendors, and whoever else to see the actuals that are happening. And I think, I'm a big, uh, person who believes in transparency and accountability, and I think this would be a great option. It has been modeled in other cities, and it has worked very well, um, so I definitely believe that we should have it here in the city of South Fulton. I do understand that this was actually budgeted in the twenty eighteen, um, budget, so we need to go ahead and implement that so we, as, uh, a city can feel comfortable and see what, uh, is happening with our finances, and it also eliminates all the questions that our, my, our financial offices are facing. And this actually is being sponsored with Councilwoman Catherine Brow.
Are there taking a motion?
I made the motion that we, uh, move forward with adopting the resolution of the city of South Fulton to institute the open government programs, and that is Resolution twenty seventeen dash zero five three.
I'll be moved and second in discussion. Councilwoman Lewis.
City Master, do you know how long it would take to, um, this would have been budgeted? Do you know how long it would take to get this software implemented in, uh, Do you know how long it would take to get this software implemented in, uh, into our system or into the finance system?
We have funded it, as you say, in the budget, and it is available for us to use. It's probably not going to be up for sixty days after the beginning of fiscal year.
And we have enough staff to, to do this? Because we're not funding it, only have to do this.
And the key is the information technology people that actually need to get it loaded, get it up. And so, we'll work with, um, the individuals that are working in that area to make it happen.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. That passes. The next item is an ordinance. It's coming to you for the third time, sponsored by Councilmember Willett, an ordinance to create Title Eight of the City of South Fulton Code Ordinances regarding traffic and vehicles, and to establish general rules of the road for the City of South Fulton.
I would like to make a motion to pass, uh, well, first of all, I would like to ask Councilman to, uh, speak to it. I would like to pass our turn to speak to it for the residents who are here and who are not here for the first or second reading.
Mayor, Members of Council, this is an ordinance that effectively adopts state law. State law establishes the rules of the road that govern anything from stop signs and stoplights to, uh, types of speed limits, um, and so on. There was a question at the last meeting about abandoned vehicles being left on a public road and right of way. Uh, what we were able to determine is that state law also governs that, and that state law allows any police officer that finds that a vehicle has been abandoned to have it removed to a garage, and that the towing service that does it is allowed to have a lien on that car. So, that's already covered in state law, um, and that addresses that issue. This is, uh, a very similar ordinance to what you see both in Fulton County and through cities throughout.
In addition, I would like to add that many of the residents have, um, complained about the commercial vehicles, uh, coming through our residences and want to stiffer, um, penalty things. So that, once we establish our rules of the road, we can look to enact these resolutions. Um, that, one of the things I know that hasn't asked is for, uh, surveillance that some of the residents have submitted to the council members and to the police department. Uh, we can, uh, look to do a resolution to have those pictures introduced as evidence in court. So, those are some of the things that we could look to once we establish our rules of the road. So, in saying that, I would like to, uh, make a motion to approve the ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash zero one eight.
We still are, uh, Council, if you want to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the one thing, and this was left open in prior two readings, that the council will need to do is add an effective date. Uh, we recommend that the effective date be November one. That lines up with the effective date in court where many of these cases will be heard. Uh, and so, uh, if there were an amendment to amend Section Five to add November one, two thousand seventeen's effective date, that would make the order. I would like to make that amendment.
I'd like to, you know, um, have a friendly amendment to make the effective date November first. House Speaker.
Councilwoman Baker?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, find out for clarity. I know last read, we were discussing, discussing the difference between those abandoned vehicles and code enforcement, and how they would, uh, actually fall into this court if it says opposed to code enforcement.
Code enforcement typically deals with abandoned vehicles on private property. This deals with abandoned vehicles on public roads. Code enforcement can penalize those, in fact, code enforcement today, and heard some of those issues coming up about abandoned vehicles or junk cars as the codes are describing. This deals with the ones that'll be on the side of the road, but they just broke down, and they're in public right, right of way. At that point, the police can, um, notify the towing service. The towing service comes and removes it, and the towing service gets paid by having a lien on the car.
Now, the difference will be being in the driveway or in front of the house? Or what will be the gray area for law enforcement that's in front of a resident?
If it, if it's on the residential property, so if it's on someone's yard, if it's in their driveway, that's all private property. If it's on the road leading up to it, and that road is a public road, most are, then that would, um, that would fall under this ordinance.
So, I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash zero one eighteen and ordinance to grade Title Eight of the City of South Fulton Code Ordinances traffic and vehicles, and to establish general rules of the road for the City of South Fulton.
With the amendment?
With the amendment.
Proper move and second. In discussion. All those in favor? And unanimous. That passes. Your next ordinance is granting permission and consent to Cal-Weda F A E M C franchise agreement ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero nineteen.
I make the motion to accept ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero nineteen enter into a franchise agreement with Cal-Weda F A E M C.
Second, proper move and second in discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. The third ordinance is relating to mortgages and advances to secure debt and liens. Provide for definitions, provide for guidelines for vacant and foreclosed property registries to provide for exemption, provide for maximum fees and penalties for registration and failure to register, to provide for appellate rights, provide for several abilities to provide an effective date to repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and for other purposes. This ordinance is sponsored by Mayor Protem Rowell under ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero twenty.
Order two thousand seventeen dash zero two zero, um, speaks to a number of consignors who are concerned with regards to vacant properties and foreclosed properties, and making sure those properties are, are maintained, and that we are holding property owners accountable for their maintenance. Um, the only clarified information I'd like, um, the council to offer is there were some suggestions made from them at the last meeting, um, which I think we can't proceed with. I just would like, um, for you to write additional information before, uh...
Was the, was the additional one, the rental property registration? Is that, okay, yeah. Um, unfortunate, unfortunate, the city, the City Mayor, uh, tried to do that, and, and was, that ordinance was struck in court. There's now a state statute on it that prevents the registration of rental property generally. This ordinance is based on the state statute that allows it to be registered once it has been unoccupied for a certain period of time. But in terms of registering each, uh, rental property, that is not permitted under state law, that has been approved. Uh, I would, if I may, add two other things about, uh, this ordinance. Um, there's been a request from staff, um, that whenever you see the word "public works", which was originally where this was going to be held, that that be amended to community development services. That does two things. One, it puts code enforcement, uh, in a, in a, right in a way to be able to do it, and it means it starts to be implemented now. Um, so, if, if, that's one of two amendments, uh, that we would request. The second is dealing with Section Three dash five thousand four, um, subparagraph B one. That's on page four of the proposed ordinance. The only issue there is, there's a reference to a Section Three dash blank, zero zero three, and that was left blank in case there were other amendments. Um, you would just insert the number five, uh, so it would read Section Three dash five thousand three.
Councilwoman?
Um, I had asked the last time for a decision. I was, uh, questioning, we had asked for, well, I had asked for an amendment, you know, rate to it, for a hundred dollars per year, um, for the, uh, registration fee for the properties that is out C and K.
I think that the, as, as we understood the request, that that would have been for rental properties generally, and that's the one that we learned that the state law doesn't allow, um, there to be in terms of registration at the local level.
Yeah, okay, so my understanding was, so we can't, and I'm being Section Three dash five thousand six to say the annual registration fee?
Oh, for, for that one, yes, that's there. It, it, uh, five thousand six, I'm sorry, I thought I was asking for a broader registration.
No, just a, a yearly fee, in other words, to keep the owners.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Cleese? Um, I have two questions, Councilwoman. First is, uh, what is that period of time before taking property?
Should have state law, it, the vacant property definition, this is on page three of the ordinance at the top, um, it has to be, uh, not lawfully inhabited for at least sixty days, or there's no evidence of utility usage within the past sixty days. That is the definition of the vacant real property.
I'm sorry, can you give me the second part of that?
Sure, it, so it's uninhabited for at least sixty days, and there's no evidence of utility usage within that sixty days. So, you're looking to vote two tests.
And then my, um, my second question is, the disordinance repeals all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict. What, are there any ordinances or parts of ordinances that are in conflict, and if so, where are they?
We are not aware of any. That is a common, um, provision put in both ordinances and state laws, um, that in case there is a conflict, this ordinance would control it.
In further discussion. Karen, that is accepted.
I make the motion to, um, accept ordinance, or pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero two zero, with an amendment to Section Three dash five thousand four to reflect Three dash five thousand three, and to replace throughout the ordinance, any reference to public works to the development services. And, um, to make sure that Section Three dash five thousand six reflects an annual registration fee of a hundred dollars.
Council, does that include all the, uh, amendments?
Yes.
Okay. Proper move and second. In further discussion. All in favor? That's unanimous. This is the mayor, continuing on page three of the Rowanville Road Four for first reading, an ordinance to comply with Georgia Law Fifty dash eighteen dash seventy, Designating an Open Records Officer and Assistant Open Records Officer for the City of South Fulton, Defining the Duty and Compensation thereof Providing for Public Record Requests to be served upon the Open Records Officer or in the Officer's absence or unavailability. Upon an Assistant Open Records Officer Providing for the Mayor Observing Public Records Requests on the Open Records Officers Providing for Notice of the City's Open Records Procedures. Providing reasonable charges for compliance with Public Records Requests to repeal conflicting code provisions, ordinances, or provisions thereof in conflict with the foregoing to establish an effective date and for other purposes. This ordinance is being sponsored by Mayor Protem Rowell under ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero twenty-five.
I would ask, uh, the council to, um, provide information for the public relative to this to address, um, the response, um, that we've gotten a number of public records requests, and making sure we have some standards in place for this.
As, as many of you know, the Open Records Act is a state law. Uh, it requires that when a request comes in, uh, a government entity has three days to respond and either produce the responsive documents, or notify the requestor that, uh, it's going to take some additional time. Part of the reason it can take additional time is, particularly in this day of email, uh, whenever there's a request for communications, it requires searching through email. And for many governments, including the city, that often takes working with the IT services to make sure that they're comprehensive. Once that's done, um, there also is a process by which, uh, uh, city staff will need to review them and make sure that the documents should not be withheld because they are exempt from the Open Records Act for anything ranging from it contains personal information, things, social security numbers, et cetera, to attorney-client privilege communications. The state law sets up the rules, but it does not set up, uh, beyond really those kinds of things, the details and how it will be implemented. What this, uh, proposed resolution, or excuse me, proposed ordinance does is establish the process within the city, uh, so the residents and, and the city government itself will know how the process works. It authorizes the, the city manager, or it actually does it off, it creates, uh, the appointment of a city, uh, Open Records Officer and an Assistant, uh, City Open Records Officer. That person will be at City Hall, uh, on all business days from eight thirty to AM to five o'clock PM. They serve at the pleasure of the city manager, and it may be an existing employee of the city government. Their duties are effectively to comply with the Open Records Act. Um, requests under the Open Records Act would flow to that Open Records Act, or excuse me, Open Records Officer, uh, to be assisted by the city officer, and they would be the person coordinating, uh, the production of open records. Fees can be charged, and under state law, can be charged, uh, for producing documents. The state law is that it has to go, um, to the lowest paid person who is able to make that determination. So, frequently, uh, and we see this now, you'll get, uh, where the attorneys have to do it because we are often looking for whether the law has those, uh, emails exempt. Uh, but in terms of the gathering of the information, that could be someone else, and that would be run under the purviews of the Open Records, uh, officer. That officer would have to go through, uh, training, uh, as part of this, uh, and, um, they would then be able to resolve the incoming open records claims.
I have a question. What's this particular person that has been appointed? Is there a responsibility to publish that person? And, uh, if someone sends an open records request and sends it to the wrong person after publication, when does the time limit start?
The time limit, that's actually covered in the ordinance, uh, proposed ordinance itself, yes.
But, but it's not for the public?
Yes, um, the, the city will be publishing the identity of the Open Records Act officer, as well as the assistant officer. There will be an email, openrecords@cityofsouthfulton.g a dot gov. The clock starts ticking when the, uh, document is received, when the request is received, uh, whether by, uh, mail, uh, statutory overnight delivery, which is UPS, uh, or email. Um, and importantly, and, and this gets sometimes creates some confusion, if the request comes in on a Tuesday, that three-day clock actually starts on Wednesday. Um, state law says you don't count the day that you receive something, you start on the next day. So, a request coming in on Tuesday, you should get a response Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That coming Monday, you can get a response because the city can, can take those three days to respond. Now, if it's something that's readily available, I'm not saying every time there's going to be a three-day wait, um, but that is what the law allows.
But I, you want to expound the fact because this has happened many times. Apparently, I'll say, it actually, even though you publish it, it actually gets sent to the wrong person. And, uh, that can delay it until it's discovered that, except, once it's discovered, is that the wrong person, does the clock stop then?
The, the way the ordinance is written is that written requests, and this is in Section seven thousand three C, uh, page two of the ordinance, that written requests served upon any other officer shall not be deemed filed until the requestor sends it to the Open Records Request Officer. And, and that, that provides, um, I think, the best position so that, um, frankly, some members of the city may not recognize it as an open records request. A lot of times, when requests come in, they just ask for information. Some are very formal, um, cite the Open Records Act. But if it comes in through that email or goes to that Open Records Act Request Officer, it will be treated as a it will be treated as an open records act request.
Counsel, will you?
So currently, those requests are going to the attorney's office and the clerk's office. And so, and I've already asked this question, but for the public, I asked what was the volume that was coming to the attorney's office? And the attorney's told me about twenty, and the clerk said he would have to get back with us. So maybe during the second meeting?
Way more than twenty. No, no, right, right, we, we did a fair amount, and I'm not sure how we, we, how some land with us and some land, I know there's a, there are reasons to do it, but we have had seventeen from individuals, three from businesses. Typically, the ones you see from businesses are persons looking, you know, to do something with property, like wanting to know what is the status of that property. Much from individuals that range from anything you can imagine.
So, so the volume was something that I was really concerned about, and then I have a question. So those requests that are considered open records are just coming from the outside, is that correct?
Correct.
Outside of the city?
Correct.
Counselor, counsel McLeary. This is again for the case of the audience, and for myself. So up until this point, these have been handled by Mr. Lake, and what I understand is we're like two hundred seventy-five dollars an hour. And I'm assuming that the person that he hired or appointed to do this will be paid a little bit less than that. It says that the compensation will be recommended by the city manager. So I was just wondering about the city manager, if you have any recommendation there for what kind of compensation that person will have for handling the request.
And looking at the volume that we've had, I don't think we really need to hire a person just to do this. I think it becomes the assignment of people in a couple of areas. But I don't believe it's requiring hiring a person in order to do that. And so, and talking with either the clerk or someone else about where we might, where somebody might take on some of that responsibility. But I don't see it requiring a whole person. One reason I thought it was a great need for this ordinance is because I know, as a councilperson, I have received numerous requests. And it has been challenging with the small staff to respond to all the requests we have as we begin to, as we continue our transition process. So I thought it was one important that we're complying with state law. But that everybody is clear, just because you send an email, it's, you know, whether it's official open records request, that everybody would know what that path was like. And so this is the main reason this ordinance is being sponsored at this time, because we have them coming in from different places, and to make sure they're compliant.
Counsel, one.
I heard what you said. Basically, you're not hiring anyone for that position, but everybody else is overwound, right?
Everyone has a lot on their plate. But I do believe, as long as they're coming into a central location, because most of the information that they have to get, all they're doing is making sure the custodian of the actual information gives it to them so that they can send it out.
So you basically know where you're going to designate these?
Oh, no, this, I haven't thought about what the person, okay, yeah.
Okay.
This is just the first read.
This is just the first read, right.
Also, counsel, I think you let your audience know that every open record is not a bad thing.
Yes. And I would add to that, Mr. Mayor, there's, and this has been litigated in courts as well. A lot of times, persons will request a document they think exists, and it may not exist. They're looking for a particular list, or they're looking for a particular communication, and the courts have been very clear that the Open Records Act request requires governments to produce documents that it has already created. It does not require governments to create a document in response to a request. So I know that, that I've been on both sides of that issue many times, and it can be frustrating, but the law is very clear on that, that if the document's not there, it's just not there.
Can people give a response that that document doesn't exist?
Yes, the response, the response would typically be, you know, we produced the responsive documents, or there are no documents responsive to the request.
In further discussion. This is the first read. Hearing no further discussion.
And the next item is an action item, a request approval for a board appointment. This is a replacement of Councilmember Jackson, appointed to the zoning board and appeals. In this case, she is nominating Mr. Calvin Bennett to replace this Amethis Harris.
Do you have a, one that's leaving, do you have a resignation letter?
Yes.
Okay. I smell this.
I move to accept Mr. Calvin Bennett to replace this Amethis Harris as the zoning board appeals.
Second, property move is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
You're having enough today.
Is he here?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No, Mr. Bennett.
Oh, Mr. Bennett, taking Mr. Harris, please, okay. Yeah, I know Mr. Bennett.
Okay, Mr. Bennett, very good. We accept my apologies to strike through number nine. And the next item on the agenda is the city manager's weekly update.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have received a written report. Thank you so much for telling us how you'd like for us to focus it in the future. There's certain updates that you would like to have, and that makes it a lot easier because we can give you the information that we want. And so we will be providing weekly updates on those areas, where we are with certain procurements, where we are with certain hires, and anything else that might be out there. In addition, in order to be able to answer the question as it relates to the budget, we will be placing a written document on the website. Generally, when you're talking, things get misinterpreted, and everybody's not here to hear it. So we will be placing that on the website as it relates to the identification of the resources, and particularly the million dollars, and that way, everybody gets the exact same answer, the exact same explanation, and we're not running around and all of those things. So we will place that on the website. The, however, as far as a presentation and a request, I would like to ask the chief financial officer, Mr. Frank Malazey, to come and to speak with you about a request that you received in writing as it relates to tax anticipation note. As you know, we've been faced with some challenges with late tax bills this year. And so it's going to cause a cash flow issue, and I wanted to speak to that in public so the public would also know about that.
Before we go to Mr. Malazey's presentation, counsel, I want to clarify information relative to the budget. So in regards to the budget and the million dollars, when do you foresee a response replaced on the website? Or when will the response be issued to the community?
Probably at the earliest Thursday, and later this morning.
His presentation, can we take his presentation?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Mr. Malazey, if you go ahead with your presentation, and if you will entertain questions, Cal.
As you are all aware, the tax bearing for this year is lower than normal. Bills will go out in July and start correcting about the tenth of October. However, this year, the tax bearing will go out late with due date mid-December twenty seventeen. Due to delay of tax bearing and expected correction of tax revenues in mid-December twenty seventeen, it is impossible for the city to meet its IGA obligation and operating expenses. The attached spreadsheet for your review outlines our monthly IGA payments that's to Fortone County and operating needs against our monthly revenue. It's for this reason that I asked for your consideration to apply for tax and special not short term, up to ten million to address the cash flow needs for the city. So from now, other than the money that we get from sales tax, there is not enough revenue inflows, and we will not be in a position to meet our obligation that we signed with Fortone County that we are paying for the services that the city is receiving. And this is from May, June, July, August, until we bring each and every department that is still with Fortone County. At the meantime, we still have the police, we still have the fire rescue, we still have animal control, we still have parks and recreation, public works. These are the services provided by Fortone County to the city that we have to pay on a monthly basis. Without the taxi money correction, it's almost impossible to make those obligations payments.
I will entertain the question for Councilman McLeary.
I have another question.
Don't have any others. I have a question. One of the things that a IGA calls for is chewing up. When is that meeting scheduled to occur, so we look at the first quarterly, is that scheduled?
That's in October. So October, they'll tell us what's the actual expenditure from May, June, July, until end of September. So it will be on quarterly basis. Once we get that one in October, we'll have another one in January. So by October, we'll know exactly how much we spent, because as of now, we are paying per invoice. And we are paying, we started paying in May, per month, five million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight. In May, and June, the same amount, five million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight. In July, it came down because court enforcement, um,
Not planning.
Planning had transitioned from the city. They came up July the third. So that one went down from fifty-two million, five million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand three eighty-eight to four million nine hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty per month. The same thing with August. August, again, we paid four million nine hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty. For those months, it's a total of twenty million. And luckily enough, there was arrangement that will, by September, end of September, we had to pay half of that. The remaining half, we have to pay until December thirty-first. And from August onwards, there's no payment of half, we pay a full amount. And we pay the fifteenth of that month. So for instance, in September, we had to pay on the fifteenth of September, for the September. And at the end of this coming September the thirtieth, we have to pay over seven million dollars for the halves of May, June, July.
What I want people to understand is, before I hit on the social reading, we are not broke. We have money, we just have a cash flow problem. And honey, being the fact that we have not collected any taxes to this point, we have franchise fees, true-ups, all of these things have to catch up with us. And we elected to have the same fiscal year as the federal government, which we are, we are putting in twelve-month worth of expenses until a nine-month, until eight-month. And so I don't want you to be here thinking that we're broke, we're not, we just have, we have to, have to be paid to the cash flow payments up. And these are just temporary dues to do that. I just want to make sure we understand that.
I actually wanted to offer and ask for another point clarification for the purpose of talking about this true-up. So basically, Fulton County has estimated how much it's going to cost to provide these services for the true-ups before we actually find out the actual amount that it has cost. And if you could just, for the audience, explain that, explain how often this true-up happens, and what happens in the event that we have overpaid for services?
So the estimation was made during the signing of this IGA. The estimation was made in March, way before this real expenditure take place. So we, the agreement was pay, to pay per invoice. And for May, the actual will come, then we estimate it. It's not that come May thirtieth or May thirty-first, you know how much it is. It may take some time, you have to reconcile. That's why they gave the quota to make those calculations. So come October, they will tell us exactly how much they spent in May. As I said, that in May, we paid an invoice of five million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight. They will tell us it didn't add up to five million, maybe it was less. Sometimes it may be even higher than that, because that was just an estimation.
So every month, they're sending us an estimate, and every?
Every month, the estimate was already made.
Right.
And if you check, yeah, any idea, and if you check communication from me, all of you has got that detail. I sent to each one of you, you have, you will see how much is due for every month. So what we are applying for ten is not unusual, it's not the first thing that city of South Fortone is doing, even Fortone County is doing that. They do that because the time you anticipate revenues, and the time you anticipate expenses, sometimes they don't match. So for example, Fortone County, their fiscal year starts from January one through December, and they don't send out the bills in, in January, they send the bills out in the October, in July, start receiving revenue in October. They have to borrow money in anticipation of receiving these taxes. So from January through October, they work on the borrowed money. When they get that money, they pay back. That's exactly what we are doing. To us, since we will not be getting in our tax money until December, we need to pay these expenses that we are getting services between now and the time we receive our money from tax.
So every, so every three months, we check in to see?
They will be telling us exactly how much it will be.
And if, I'm sure we have understood that we have to write them a check.
Exactly.
They have overcharged, they write us a check.
They will not write us a check to just reduce the other expenses, because we still have.
Nobody run on tax for that.
Yeah, so they will just use an invoice. For instance, they have already started reducing invoices. We had the community development services, when they came, they had to reduce three hundred and twelve thousand a month. Then we had the three staff that were under finance, but now they are under community development, they had to reduce thirty-two thousand a month. Now, court enforcement moves, they had also to reduce one seventy-four thousand a month. So our invoices are getting down as we transition our employees from Fortone County.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, on the way.
Just a little proof of the pandemic is that probably, I just want to explain that this estimate did not, was not pulled from the sky. It was based on our twenty sixteen service level. And so, in some instances, probably in a lot of instances, we may have a credit because we don't have the same workforce, especially in some of our public safety areas that we had in twenty sixteen. So therefore, they are not providing the same level of service, because we don't have the. So, therefore, they are not providing the same level of service, uh, because we don't have the same level of employees in, uh, that we have now, that we have from sixteen.
Thank you for bringing up that one, that's true. We expect more credits than maybe the cost going up. For instance, you have got a lot of cities that are talking about the public works, talking about the, uh, public safety. So far, I think we understood that they had about eighteen or twenty vacancies in the public sector. So, that's not exactly the services they provided in twenty-sixteen. Those will be some of the credits that we'll be getting. At the same time, from May through July, City of South Fulton has not been getting tax revenues. Fulton County has been receiving revenues on our behalf. That is, we had to reduce our September invoice by one point three million dollars. So, there are several areas where we can get credit or they will use, because they have received revenue on our behalf.
Listen, my mom's there, a quick question, before we, um, put out the story of optimism. I also have to keep in mind that we are responsible for satisfying the ten by December thirty-first of this year. And given the fact that our revenue is expected to come in mid-December, have you done any kind of analysis about, you know, how all that will look?
The good part of it, we are meant to receive our, um, we start collecting our tax money in mid of December. And the ten is not due until December thirty-first.
Those two weeks.
Yes. But at the same time, we are still getting bid by bid from the sales tax. So, those ones are helping us. And if we get this ten, it will help us to pay off the ten that is there. That's the reason why we need it now, so that we don't come to the point in case correction of taxes, don't make up what we need.
So, can you please, in our next work session, provide an analysis for the council to look at, what's rejected to come in, given that that is a very short timeline, and I meant to pay and deal with it.
Who said that they do that?
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, this is my question.
Actually, I'm still missing the question for the...
I mean, is it about the same item?
Is this an action item?
No.
Okay. Um, we hear a lot of, uh, public comment about, you know, the need to hire police officers, the need to hire fire, public safety workers. Um, and I hate to be, we are not allowed to respond to you guys doing public comments, so it's not like, you know, we don't care what you're asking. Uh, but to answer some of those questions now, uh, these agreements that the city manager worked out with the county, the county manager, the IGA prohibits us from bringing police or fire over before February of twenty-eighteen, January of twenty-eighteen. And, um, I, I'm wondering, is there any way for us to hire police officers that work specifically for the City of South Fulton before that time? And if there's not, I just want to make that clear to the audience, that we're not, we're not not responding. We hear that we need more police officers, but maybe we just can't do anything until February. Go ahead.
Well, you opened the door for me to talk about a couple of things, but I'll answer the questions that you asked. Um, and for, uh, the accurate point is, we do not have the capacity to hire anyone in police until they come over, because we're still paying Fulton County to provide the service. However, we are encouraging Fulton County to advertise, to hire, and field any positions that they might have. Also, the HR department is meeting with the current officers this week to try to determine from them, what are some of the incentives or strategies we can use to recruit? We don't want to wait till they get here and then start deciding how we're going to recruit. We need to start doing that now. We still need to start looking for officers now, because, and I'm sure Councilman Beal can help me out with this, that's not a short process, when, at least a year, to get a police officer. So, we really need to be working right now on our side of the street to do several things, of which one of it is to get out there and to start hiring. And so, to show you that you read my mind in other discussions, I am preparing a document to come to you to talk about what we need to be doing right now on our side of the street, for lack of a better phrase, in order to be ready and prepared and in front of some things. In addition, I do believe it's going to be, and it is necessary, for us to have someone that is riding, I was going to say riding herd, but that's not it, working cooperatively with the county to ensure that what we need is what they're doing. It is very difficult, and it is not fair, to ask someone on their staff that's getting paid by them to confront the chief on something that we want, whether it's staffing, whatever it is. So, it's not fair. So, we really need the person on our side of the street that can be our proponent in working with Fulton County for what we basically need. And that's part of the document and white paper that I'm preparing to get you.
Let me add, let me add, uh, to that statement. I think it's two other things we have to realize. And I've, and, and this year, we had over a hundred and seventy-seven applications for police officers. Thirty-seven came for the agility test. Out of that thirty, about fifteen, uh, got out there. Out of the background, it was six.
Wow. Wow.
But we got to keep that in mind. The other thing we got to keep in mind is, we have to show our public service people that we care. And we got to make sure that they believe in us. And we're going to do what we need to do for their best interest, because we need them. So, we're going to have to change the mindset. We can't make, you can only apologize for anything that may happen, as I said in the past, the past is gone. But we got to show them that they're really valuable, because to be honest with you, everybody's targeting our reason. And it's because of a lot of things that shouldn't have been done. And I'm not going to make apologies for it, it shouldn't, we all understand. But we have to let these officers know that we care, that we want you, we are staying in the department, and we want to make sure that we take care of you, so that you can take care of your family. And, uh, I would just add that, if it's not a bad part, not, or anybody, I'm just saying that we got to now turn it around, show police and fire, and not only that, all of our, all of our, that we really, really care about them, and we want them to be here.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. And that's, that's why I asked that question, I wanted the public to hear that answer, because I want you all to know that he is a mayor and councilor, we do hear you. Uh, it's, there are just some things going on where we just can't do what you want right, right now, but we do hear you, Governor.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Ms. Gere.
So, this makes me think about the national search, um, for both the police chief and for the city manager. So, what's this that?
As we reported in the manager's report, the closing date for companies to submit us their, so their response to the RFP, um, has closed. We had ten companies around the country that submitted proposals. Currently, the purchasing director, manager, is reviewing the proposals for those to be completed and developing the template by last Friday. It says the nineteenth, but it's actually up until Friday. We're trying to identify the third member of the review panel, so that we can complete the review and hopefully have a nomination or a recommendation of a company to you by the tenth of October.
I can't follow up, John.
Why did the timeline change? Because we were supposed to receive recommendations on September twenty-sixth today. And I didn't get any recommendations in this timeline.
I need to know what document you were saying, um, where the twenty-sixth was written, because the closing date of the applications was only a couple of weeks ago. And so, I'm not sure what publication we might have misprinted, but there was going to be no way from a closing date in two weeks for you to review, rank all the applications, and to be able to give you that. So, we will, um, go back and look at the timetable, so that we know where we are with that and going to the next meeting, not this meeting, but the next meeting.
Okay, I will provide to a next one.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I would like to, all right, let me do, uh, Council, Councilwoman Willis and Councilman Beal.
City Manager, if it's requiring our purchasing, um, director a little bit more time to do things, um, just, I would ask that we just be notified. I do understand she's a one-person show, and personally, I don't understand how she's going to make it, um, with everything, with the transit, with the departments left that are going to have to be transitioning into our city. All of them are complicated, and all of them have, um, several vendors, hundreds of vendors. So, um, I just want you to keep that in mind. And I do understand she's a one-person show, and I want our entire council to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Councilman Beal.
Uh, yeah, that's it, Mayor. I think that, um, the document that Councilwoman Beal was talking about, was that resolution that I wrote, and it was a deadline of September twenty-ninth. Um, I also know that part of that resolution was to, uh, post the job on the website. And we got, I think, uh, I don't see our HR personnel, she's here. Um, the, at last count, I think there were something like forty resumes that had been submitted, and there were ten that met the qualifications. So, I just wanted to update on how many of those have come in.
I don't know, I would like to ask the HR director, if she knows what the number is today. But we did, as you directed, posted on our website, so that we would have some applications to give to the respective...
As of today, there are eight, eighty-six applicants for the city manager position.
Are the eighty-six qualified, have they?
We have not qualified those applicants, as I said at the last meeting. We will turn those over to the selected, to the selected company, the selected firm to qualify.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I want to support your question, so the Councilwoman Beal.
So, Madam, um, City Manager, it's still that parks and recreation is coming in January, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And police and fire February, March.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that transition doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about right now, because you're talking about October, um, for the companies to close, and then moving on to come up with, uh, this applicants that we go through, uh, curby them of October. And that's not going to affect any transitions, is that correct?
That's correct, it will not affect any of the transitions. But it also shows why we need someone on our side until you get that chief that can act on your behalf.
And so, what are you really saying, when you say until we get that chief that we need someone that acts on your behalf? Or is that really...
Well, I'm looking at someone that we can consider, that would be, um, and I'm not really calling them an acting chief, or a police administrator, or someone that can begin to start recruiting on our side of the street, that can begin, um, to work with Fulton County about some staffing issues. Um, a lot of questions, as much as they possibly can. The current staff are doing an excellent job in trying to address some of those issues. But it, it's hard to lobby against your boss when you, when we want something on our side of the street. And so, we're not talking about anything permanent, we're not talking about anything full-time, but we are talking about someone that we can consider that could be that voice for us.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Beal.
I guess this question is to John. Um, we had asked you to, um, look into some things with, about the current chief, what we could do, have we heard anything, or...
We have not, um...
Has anything been done, let me say that.
Yes, some, some conversations have taken place. Part of the, um, part of the issue, as you've heard about, is that the IGA has that true-up time. Um, and the, at the October lead where we discuss, because police is where we've seen the twenty-sixteen budget, presumes that police force is staffed here, and it's been at a lower point. So, that's where some of those conversations will, will take place in the morning right now.
But what I'm saying is, the chief is not responsive to us.
I think we'd better be careful. I'm going to leave that alone. Yeah. I'm going to do some of these daily sessions, though.
I'm going to leave that alone.
I'm going to be very careful with that. Any more discussion? Okay, Councilwoman Beal.
So, I, I apologize, City Manager, I did find the information, and it does say that, uh, September twenty-fifth would be the council, the consultant will present, I guess, to the, um, staff, and then we will receive recommendations to the city council on September thirty, so I'll, I'll get, I missed everything.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beal.
Any further discussion? Councilman Beal.
Uh, the email we received referenced the police acknowledging us. Is that now something that, that position, that officer, or that liaison that you speak of, would hold them under post where they can actively, uh, respond as law enforcement agent of our new city? And actively recruit?
Yes, that would have to be a requirement, if it would be necessary.
Yeah, but now, given that we have that status, uh, is that something that we can do effectively, at your discretion, bring that individual over, or, uh, appoint someone for that temporary position?
Now that we have that designation, it allows us to do that, but it also allows us to continue through the process, so we can get the ORI number and all of the other things that we need to do, so that by the time the police comes over, everything is set.
But that individual can come over, uh, having his certification, I guess, transferred to our city?
Well, they're coming as an administrator, not coming, um, to be a law enforcement officer. You want them to have been a sworn law enforcement officer, and possibly in a level of leadership at a significant level.
Right, even as a direct, I was asking, given that we now have that status by post, if he or she came over and they were a sworn officer, they would be covered under post, based off of that new status that we just have?
I would have to look into that, I, I don't have an answer for that, what is that person going to be?
Right.
I'd have to look at that person.
I mean, if he's going to be working on our behalf, or...
It's, it's possible. Councilman Beal, I think it's more like you look at it as a contracted person, uh, that would, that have the qualifications of a, of a full certification officer, that would just come over, be working for us, like, you have, or not employed, but contracted, am I correct?
Yes, on a short-term basis, not full-time, but until they can get over, until they can transition.
Right.
So, they wouldn't, after they transition over, you go through the process and get the police chief, there's no need for this position again.
So, we're not looking for anyone who may be currently with that, with Fulton County?
Doesn't have to be.
It does not have to be.
Right.
If someone desires to, that's one thing, but I don't know if anybody wants to lose their spot in their seniority by moving over.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, they probably... So they probably may not wanna consider that. Since it's, it's a contract position and not a full-time position.
Okay, Ms. Baker? Okay.
Um, City Manager, is it possible for our next, for our next work session for you to give us some recommendations in terms of making sure that we're able to move the police department over in terms of looking at this potentially contracted position? Uh, I think it is a priority for our citizens to make sure we have that, we don't need any lid to, uh, it, it, it's very important.
And we can include that, yes, ma'am, in our work session of the two.
Councilwoman Khalid?
Uh, just one more item in the City Manager's report, uh, you talked about the, uh, the electronic newsletters, the one I sent out, our first electronic newsletter. And I see Ms. Spikes in the back, she's our community base director. I just wanted publicly to say that was a beautiful newsletter. I hope that everyone saw it and I would love to see it on our website, on our homepage somewhere because everyone who didn't get it, it's available. Thank you, girls.
And may I say that, thank you for the lead-in. For all of the residents, she's trying to catch you as you came in the door. But if you would like to make sure that you're on the list to receive our electronic newsletter, please see Ms. Spikes in the back and make sure that you get on the list.
Councilwoman Warren Twilts?
Um, I sent you an email earlier today, uh, if you could, I would like to have, um, Mr. Dwight Robinson come in and do a presentation to you and Mr. Frank Malazi, uh, presentation on our village rate. Um, there is proposed legislation for, uh, to cap the tax assessments at two percent. And, um, we need to have a full understanding of where we are as far as our property assessments, our, in the city of South Fulton, um, how far behind we are, because we know that we are far, we are not being properly assessed and how that three percent tax cap, if it passes, how it's gonna have an impact on the city of South Fulton.
Yes, ma'am, uh, I will read that email and we'll discuss with the mayor about placing that on the agenda. I really don't see any, um, problems with that because that's why we have work sessions and that would be a good place for that to occur, um, in our work session.
Any further discussion? Eric N., Mr. Quirrell?
It's the mayor and councilor that takes you to the mayor and city council comments.
Baker? Uh, here he is.
I'd just like to say, uh, we're gonna be having, uh, Futures of Fulton Forum on October fourteenth, Black Show's library. Uh, please feel free to come out. Uh, it's gonna be with District Six as well. And, uh, thank you for coming down. I need my elders in District Seven as well to be informed of that Shell gas station, as always, on the Seder Road and, and O National, that the cash prices only is if you go inside. So don't be fooled. And to everybody in the rest of the audience, I just wanna say, since this is our first time speaking in a long time, uh, directly to you, that, you know, trials and tribulations build up walls in front of faces made of stone. Yet we will stand strong enough to break these walls down to carry on. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Reverend.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out, um, and I'd like to thank those that attended the Old National Merchants Association's five K walk on Saturday. We had a great time. Excuse me? Oh, the person, okay, he's trying to talk, but they came in last, he and Khalid, but, uh... But my person, um, Clyde Sampson came in first, uh, from District Five, so shout out to him. Also, thanks, he came in first. Also, thanks to the City of College Park for, uh, inviting me to their kids' fest on Saturday. We had a great time and it was, uh, well-intended. Uh, and we presented, they also presented a, uh, one thousand dollar, well, Atlanta Hawks presented a one thousand dollar scholarship to heritage of new schools. So that's good for them, thank you.
I wanna thank all residents for coming out and being engaged. And thank you to the ones who did not make it and wanted to come and, and are still watching the council meetings on, uh, the video link. And I would especially thank the residents of District Three. I've looked out into the audience and I am proud to, to see that you all come out, um, and support me and our entire city council. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the specific communities who invited me to their HOA and the HOA events, Howland Lake subdivision, Jones Croft subdivision, Fountain Forest, Hidden Valley, Daxton Point, Delet Trace and Mendolia Estates. And, and I would like to tell you that if there's any other residents, or HOA's in District Three who want me to come out and have a, um, intimate, um, conversation, would you please invite me to your events and your HOA meetings? Um, I am having a District Three Town Hall, curbed my residents' request. You wanted me to do a District Three Town Hall listening session. So I will comply and, uh, it will be October fourth at Welcome Hall, um, Park at six-thirty. And there will also be a Welcome Hall Ball Festival on October twenty-seventh, that is Friday. I want the communities to come out, the HOAs, and, um, trick-or-treat with the kids. And there will be a movie, um, played for the community after the trick-or-treat and carnival event. And this is in partnership with our Parks and Recreation Department. And this is the first, uh, ball festival at Welcome Hall. We want to continue to do this every year. I wanna say congratulations to Clifton Dell United Baptist Church. They celebrated their fifty-third anniversary. And I wanna thank you for your service to the community. Uh, I celebrated with them last Sunday and, um, Reverend Allen, he gave an awesome, um, message. Uh, they are also having a health fair and blood drive this Saturday from ten a.m. to three p.m. So please come out, it's open to the public, free food, free entertainment. Thank you.
Real quick, I wanna say congratulations to our newest business in District One, Jay's Kitchen and Bar. I wasn't able to make it to the grand opening night because I had to do the people's business here. But I wanna encourage you to patronize them. Um, I also, uh, kudos to Southwood and Chamber on their annual golf tournament. I had the opportunity to be, bring greetings, um, to the golfers, they had a great turnout. On October eighteenth, I have my, um, District One, um, listing Town Hall, listing session and Town Hall meeting at Wolf Creek at six-thirty. And, um, thank you.
I wanna say, sorry, I wanna say thank you to everyone that came out as well, um, especially last week for our artist's budget hearing. So I do wanna thank you, I've received your emails and your questions and I have answered them all. I do encourage you to continue to reach out to me if you have any questions or concerns. That is what I'm here for, to answer, um, for you. Also too, on Sunday, October the first, I will have a walk and talk with Councilwoman Gomes at Clifton Dell Park. This is to pretty much commemorate World Health Day. And, uh, that will happen, actually, World Health Day is the last Sunday that is observed in September. But we will be walking and talking, getting a little bit of exercising. So if you have any questions, um, regarding what's happening in the district and throughout the community, we're gonna walk and talk together at Clifton Dell, eight a.m. Also too, um, as I mentioned, even with the proclamation, October is Crime Prevention Month. The week of October eighth is, uh, President Obama has de- designated that as National Community Police Week. So I do ask that you all, um, look at events that are happening throughout the county and support your, uh, law enforcement. This, this is a new way of continuing to foster a strong relationship between our law enforcement and the community. Um, also too, I will be having, um, my Town Hall meeting for District Two on October the twenty-third, Monday, at six-thirty. So I do encourage you all to come out, that is at Wolf Creek. October the twenty-eighth, we got lots of going on in, uh, District Two. Um, October the twenty-eighth, Clifton Dell, we will be having their fall festival. So I do encourage the community to come out, we can all fellowship together and have a great time. Um, also too, October is Breast Awareness Month, um, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whatever else month out there. I do ask you to, there's a lot of things that we need to be aware about. But being a healthcare advocate, I do ask that we all make sure that we are taking care of ourselves. Again, if you have any questions, please visit my, uh, social media sites, Facebook, Twitter, or you can email me at carmelitha.gomes@cityofsouthfulton.ca.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight as well. Also, I'm just overwhelmed because we had a meeting and every vote was unanimous. We need to give ourselves a hand. Um, I want to thank the members of the Economic Development Committee in District Four. They were just given the charge, they took it, they ran with it. I think they did an excellent job as evidenced by their presentation this evening. Can they please stand up so we can give them a hand? Please, everybody, everybody, please. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I don't want, um, the folks at Lucasville Park to think that they have been left out because we have a working environmental committee. We left last night and we are dealing with some serious things. And everybody's gonna get an opportunity to hear from them. We have one member of the committee here tonight. Will that member please stand? And so we, we hear you, we understand. I've been down there, I've seen it, I know what you're going through. So help is on the way. We also have the Education Committee. And that, and the Education Committee is working on some other initiatives. And one of the members of the, um, Economic Development Committee, she and her husband are working on a project that involves agriculture through middle school. So we have some really great things going on. We have some great things going on. I just wanna thank everyone and I am just so happy that we are doing this. Slow but safe. So thanks, everybody.
And so a point of, of clarification to Ms. Jackson's earlier comment about the Old National Merchants Association race. I, um, I'm, I'm one of the millennials, I believe that, you know, I'm from this generation, I don't give everybody big surprise. Um, I, uh, as they do with all the boys raised in the city of South Fulton and that Saturday was our Tri-Cities homecoming and the Tri-Cities High School graduate. So don't believe the bad news they say about schools because birthdays come out of our spirit. Um, so I was at club racing till one a.m., celebrating. So I actually, I actually came in first of the runners from the club. I wanna let you know that there are two really big events happening in District Six. One, uh, uh, Mr. Baker talked about October fourteenth is gonna be our, uh, joint district meeting. And November fourth, we are going to have a day of political education. Everyone is invited, but it's going to be on O National, it's called the Old National Electoral College. We are going to cover everything from how to get speed bumps and, and, uh, stoplights in your neighborhood to what a state senator does, uh, and what our governor does. Many of you may not know, but we also go to the polls on November seventh. So we'll be there November fourth, that is the Saturday before Election Day. There's no early voting that Saturday, uh, so you can come all day and learn about these events. Um, we have two things on our ballot, uh, state senate race. Uh, a lot of people have been focusing on the mayor. Uh, Vincent Moore, who is many of our state senators, is in that mayor's race, so his seat is open. Uh, there's candidates here tonight. And, uh, the second thing is the chairman of the Fulton County Commission. So you all know we got submission with the Fulton County Commission. Uh, y'all can get in front of these chairman candidates and talk about South Fulton. Um, you can find out about all of these events and more in my newsletter. I do a weekly newsletter. Uh, I have one of my interns here tonight, uh, Mr. Teacher Dwight. You can sign up with him or with me after this meeting, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Council. Thank you, Councilwoman Khalid. Just briefly, um, Ms. Gillian, I stole a little bit of my thunder because I did want to mention the fact that, uh, this was a great meeting. Uh, you must understand, as I go back and look at most of our meetings and lives of them, even though we disagree with a lot of things and endlessly disagree, if you go back and look at our votes, most of the time we voted down. So there is hope, you know, for everybody. So I wanna thank all of my colleagues for a great meeting tonight. Uh, in the next three meetings, to be exact, it has been a great, uh, opportunity for us to, to show you guys that we're trying to do the right thing, come together and make the right decisions. Uh, I wanna also announce that there will be an investiture ceremony at, uh, at Liverpool Baptist Church at forty-five, forty-nine Cascade Road.
Forty-two, forty?
Forty-two, forty-five Cascade Road, Liverpool Baptist Church on Friday, September twenty-ninth at ten a.m. And that's for our new municipal court judge, and she can stand, is Tiffany Carter-Seller. And lastly, those of you who came in to talk about parks, I want you to know that parks, through all of our time together and, uh, talking about our issues, parks has been built for us as our number one, building, we're gonna do. Uh, we don't have control of parks right now, but they're coming first of the year. It is the number one priority for us and I guarantee you that, uh, we are, we're, we're destined to make a change. And so just bear with us, for anything we got that now that, that's not good, we need to look at, uh, colleagues and make sure that they can last until the troops arrive. All right? So once again, thank you all, it's been a great meeting, we appreciate you being... Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was having a little bit of... Most of them. Trying to go a second. Stay loose a second. I was on paper. I'm not a U.N. attorney.